voters out in Loudoun County, Virginia. And if they were given the chance, they would vote most of the people in the school district, school board leaders out of office if they had their way. Last night, they had another one of the meetings and it was chaotic. A couple of people wound up getting arrested and a couple of people had to be tended to because for medical reasons as well. A lot of the people were objecting to policy 840, which is a transgender policy over which bathroom they people would use or preferred names and stuff like that. There was so much going on. There were 300 people in attendance. 259 of them asked if I can get up and speak. And they, after a couple of dozen, they said, okay, we're done and they left.
Well, yesterday we reported on the Democrats in that area. They put out a tweet and it said, jump on our bus. We have three different bus stops. You can pay a little fee and we will pick you up to take you to this meeting. So not everyone from there is from Loudoun County. There might've been some Fairfax County people, which is a county next door. But they're, everyone there is either pro CRT or against CRT. They did have a chance to talk. One mom I heard, she said she's going to pull her child out of the school now.
Yeah, here's how it sounded.
Resign!
Resign coward!
The Western culture and values that brought forth Christianity in the founding documents are being called evil and racist.
I'm reminded the tyranny of Communist China where your money is legally stolen and then used in government schools, not public schools. These are not public schools. These are government schools like here to indoctrinate children against their parents.
My child is...
I love that dude. I love that. Why are my taxes paying for my child to learn about American history, brother? What the fuck? It's bullshit. Wait, I gotta run that back actually. I wanna, I wanna see the first one.
...brought forth Christianity in the founding documents are being called evil and racist.
That guy is a fucking Nazi dude. I, I, I'm sorry. Doesn't pass the smell test, straight up. Get mad at me all you want. This motherfucker looks straight up like a young Nazi, okay? Like, I see that guy in a crowd, I'm like, nope, nope. That's a fucking massive vibe check failure dude. Vibe checked, denied, okay? He's like, he's so soy. It's just like, literally just perfect. Like, who, who is this person's child, by the way? You're a child, motherfucker. Why are you there talking? If I were to look up this dude's background, I'd find out that he's like a part of a, he's an operative in the Republican Party. And like, he's just there to be like, I'm a concerned parent. Like, oh, really? Where's your child? You're like literally, first of all, you look like a young conservative, which means you've never fucked, okay? Like, straight up, let's be real. You're, you're like basically 25, 26 years old. Your hairline says older, but you can tell, alright? No shot that this person has ever had sex. It just doesn't happen. It's not happening. Yeah, I went there. Young conservatives, they, they've never fucked.
...documents are being called evil and racist.
I'm reminded the tyranny of Communist China where your money is legally stolen and then used in government schools, not public schools. These are not public schools. These are government schools.
For the record, he's describing taxation. Like, this person currently is describing taxation as a concept exclusive to China, which is very cool. Like, taxing does not occur in the United States of America. This is a foreign concept. Just like public schools are very different than government schools. China invented taxes to do schooling by the government, which is very different than what we have here. Okay, let's keep going.
...like here to indoctrinate children against their parents.
My child...
Wait, so he thinks that the Chinese government is like making their, their fucking next generation woke or something? The irony is like, they would love, they would love for America to have like a Chinese government style operation. Like, these motherfuckers would literally love if they could instill the same sense of patriotism and national cohesion that China desperately works to cultivate, okay? And with, in, in some respects, like, they don't even need to try super hard. Like, they would love that. They would love if America could have, could whip up its own national identity in a similar capacity, in a very conservative and Christian and religious capacity to like what China does for the national cohesion in China, which is different than obviously like white supremacist American centric values. But they would love that dude. That's crazy to me that he's like, as a matter of fact, what they're doing here is kind of that. Like, they're upset that children are learning about a critical race theory, what they perceive to be critical race, which is just like children learning about systemic racism. And that's precisely what they're upset about. They want to censor education. They want to change education in this country. And that's what they're advocating for and they want the government to do it. So this notion that like, this notion that like, oh man, I fucking hate, I hate that, you know, this is happening in China. It's like, I wish we could do it here in America. But like, you know, for American shit, not like Chinese shit, whatever the fuck they're doing out there.
...is not oppressed and don't assume that. As long as you...
Attacking people with their, with accents and their appearance is not helping dude. Don't be lazy, brother. One, I'm an incredibly lazy person. And two, it's called entertainment, okay? Clearly, some people enjoy it. If you don't, it's not for you. You can fuck the fuck off, okay? How about that?
You Marxists push your unconstitutional agenda on my child. She will not be returning back to Loudoun schools.
Unbelievable.
That's the lady I was talking about.
As the pair...
Yeah, I wonder why she specifically pointed out that lady. Literally the only black person in that entire crowd in Loudoun, Loudoun, whatever the fuck you call it, I don't give a shit about Virginia, okay? In the entire county, they're like, I wonder why she was really into that lady specifically? That was the lady I was talking about. She was one of the good ones.
Parents were cut off from speaking at the meeting. A bunch of them remained in the room and they decided that they would read their prepared remarks to each other. But at one point deputies told people, you gotta leave or you're going to be arrested for trespassing if they refuse to follow their orders to vacate. That was the only way they could get people out of the meeting because the meeting room, after the meeting had adjourned because people are so fired up over both sides on these issues.
So I don't know, nothing, I don't know if anything has changed yet. And that's the frustration. Joe Mobley, Paul Chen, Rachel Pisani, parents had joined us, parents from last night, got up early this morning and joined us to tell us their perspective on where they go from here.
We are trying to recall the...
Paul Chen, let's take a look. So these guys are close to DC, right? So like, a lot of them are going to be political operatives, okay? Let's see, let's take a look. Hmm, uh, what is this? What is this? What is this? Party officials on London GOP. See if we can find Paul here. What? No way dude. He's a, he's a part of the Loudoun County Republican Committee. What? No way dude. That's crazy. That's crazy. That's just crazy. He's just, dude, that's, that's wild dude. He's just like, what? No, he's just a concerned parent dude. What, you think, you think a guy who's a, a part of a Republican Committee can't be a, just a average parent dude? What, what are you, crazy? He's just a, he's just a concerned parent dude. This is not like these, these fucking Big Pharma execs that also happen to work within the Republican Party, like, they, they can't, they, they're just honestly just upset. That's why they're here. That's why they're on Fox News.
...board, six members out of eight or nine members are, we're trying to recall because if we don't, this, these radical policies will not change.
Last night proved that this school board and in particular Brendan...
It could be a different... Joe Mobley, okay, 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 okay. He's a Big Pharma lobbyist. Paul Chen is a Big Pharma lobbyist, okay? And a, a part of the Loudoun County Republican Committee. Joe Mobley, another concerned parent. Let's take a look at what Joe Mobley's background is. I, I would love to fucking find out what he does for a living. Oh, he's a conservative broadcaster. What? No way. That's crazy dude. That's crazy that he's an up and coming young grifter with a, oh dude, that's wild. Conservative radio host.
And Jared...
Concerned parent and conservative radio host, boys.
Have a real problem with the First Amendment, all the way from religious expression, freedom of conscience to freedom of speech.
We do not want to co-parent with our government. We want to be able...
Wait, this one looks familiar. Let's take a look at Rachel Pisani. Let's see, let's see what she's doing. Uh, she's just a marketing strategist. Uh, she's not... I don't, I think she might be like actually fucking just, just a Republican chud, concerned parent. I can't find too much on her beyond that. Rachel Pisani is a boutique marketing agency based in the DC metro area, speakers, authors, life church, oh, life coaches, churches, nonprofit organizations. Serves as we offer integrated strategy, social media branding, web design, website and database management. Yeah, it's just like strategist, marketing strategist.
...able to instill beliefs and instill our faith in our children without hesitation. So they can mute our mics, they can arrest us, they can kick us off of public property. We're not going to stop.
She even went on to say that the teachers were told, if they don't adopt the critical race theory teachings and teach that to the kids next fall, should, they were told they'll be fired. They could be fired, right?
Yeah, yeah. And they said, all would not have happened had we not had a pandemic and all these parents were looking over the shoulders of their kids or overhearing the Zoom calls and saying, what the heck is going on here? And that's what I, I find...
Wait. Rachel Pisani is recognized as a branding strategy leader. She has been a regular guest on Fox News and NBC and has testified before the Senate Finance Committee regarding the proposed addendum she wrote on Senate Bill 574. You know, a chatter pointed out and said that these people want to act like they are, uh, they are being treated like black people were treated in the civil rights movement, except these people were around during the civil rights movement, okay? They were. They were just on the other fucking side. People exactly with the same operating principles were literally still picketing outside of schools, saying, we don't want you teaching that communist nonsense in our fucking schools, even back then. Especially back then. I mean, there are, I think respectable lawyer found some funny photos. I'll just show you. Right here. Like, here, here you go dude. I mean, same fucking energy, like same energy. This is from that, this is from that rally, right? We are the parents, stand up. Stop teaching critical racist theory. Got him. Pretty good. We oppose race mixing in schools, forced integration creates racial hatred. We favor upholding the day law. We oppose surrendering states' rights to Communist-based court opinion. I mean, the motherfucker looks the same dude. Maybe it's the same guy actually. Probably not. He'd be way older, but... It's like, it's so funny dude. They're making the same fucking face too. Like, so yeah, they, they know a thing or two about how black people are treated in the civil rights movement because, you know, they're just carrying on the tradition of those who continued the oppression and tried to continue the oppression. Now, the irony of course is that if they maybe got a little bit of critical race theory, at least their children would get a better perspective on the legacy of slavery and segregation that permeates through all of our institutions. You know what I'm saying? Like, maybe then they would know.
Alls they keep doing is changing the narrative. Critical race theory is culturally responsive framework, culturally responsive teaching. It's all just Trojan horses. Inequity and diversity and inclusion, you know, come on. You know, one thing after another, after another...
Come on, wait, wait, we gotta stop somewhere. Come on. Inequity, diversity, inclusion, all of these horrible values. I hate it. I hate it, brother. These are things we need to stop. Come on. Stop with this. Same thing with the pandemic. Social distancing is communism, race mixing is communism, everything is communism. Everything is critical race theory, everything is communism. Words don't have to mean anything, boys. That's the point. If they did mean something, then, then you would have to actually have an argument and like have an honest conversation around these subjects. Like, they don't have to mean shit. They can mean whatever you want them to mean. Dude, these guys are such losers dude. Oh my God, getting together and like fucking, oh God. Dude, this is so weird. Like, why the fuck do you do this? Like, you get, you go outside? You, you... You go out to like a school board meeting and you fucking sing the Star Spangled Banner? Like, that's so weird, man. That's so fucking weird. Stan, not CRT. Song name, been looking for this, please. Man, fuck that dude. That shit don't even slap, it's terrible. This lady literally harassed the school board at the meetings about CRT. This is what happens when you take a stand against the radical left. Video one, just absolutely terrifying. Just last week, this young man's mother attempted to attack me. Now him and his father came at me had the deputy not intervened. Who knows what they would have done?
Tell us that they've experienced racism in Carmel schools and here we are.
Dude, sit down. What's wrong with you?
Sit down!
You're not normal.
Sit down!
You're not normal. I see what CRT does to you. Please go...
CRT did this to you? Yo, young Zoomers got some drip, by the way. That's a nice little tie dye pattern. I like it.
Sit down, young man. Young man, please go sit down.
Sit down, sit down, sit down, sit down, sit down.
Go sit down, young man.
CRT turned you into this tro. What the fuck happened to you then, you psycho?
You're making me scared.
I want him to stop filming my dad.
Excuse me, it's a public forum.
I want this man to stop filming him.
It's a public forum.
I don't know where he's gonna post it. So I want him to stop filming right now.
Oh my God, he's like making fun of the kid, like worrying about, like, trying to fucking save their parent from harassment potentially.
It's okay, it's okay, it'll be okay. Does anybody have a tissue?
No, 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 no. Let's get this done. Film me, you got me? You got me on camera?
Get back! Now, get your, get back! Liberal!
Get back! Dude, this is so funny. Yo, yo, I swear to God dude. Dude, I, I think we need to oppress rich white folk living in the suburbs a little bit. Like, they need like a little bit of bullying and a little bit of oppression. Like, they're so bored. They need something in their lives dude. I'm serious, like, you don't do this when you're, you don't do this when you're like literally suffering and you have like medical fucking bills to pay and all this other shit. Like, you do this when you're bored, okay? Just like a little bit of government mandated oppression so that they can like actually cry about something that's legitimate for once. It could be healthy, I'm just saying. Had the deputy not stepped in, this is like the personification of a liberal soy father. What the fuck was he going to do to you? Like, are you crazy? What do you think this guy was gonna do? Like, he's got his fucking iPhone charger. He's got his anchor iPhone charger and his fucking, uh, just bursting out of the seams of his jeans that he tucked in, that he tucked his t-shirt into. Like, what's this guy gonna do? He was gonna say CRT related things. We needed to stop him. Get back! I don't want to hear your liberal propaganda!
Film me, you got me? You got me on camera?
Get back! Now, get your, get back!
Liberals are insane!
Of course, soy, soy father is not the weakest person in the room because the weakest person in the room is the person who's afraid of soy father.
Go sit down, young man. It'll be okay.
Back the blue! Back the blue!
Can you go sit down, young man? It'll be okay. It'll be okay. Oh my God.
Back the blue! Beat his ass! Beat that kid's ass! Why the fuck do we pay you? They're threatening me with their existence!
So guys, this whole meeting is being livestreamed. I want to talk about this for a second. I want to talk about why my son might be worrying about these gentlemen and film me. You know why? Because as Thea mentioned in her speech, last time we saw some incredibly brave young students, these are...
Fucking Twitter videos oppressing me, brother. What the fuck?
...minors come up here and speak to us about their experience. And you know what happened when they went home? Some of the people sitting right over here jumped on the internet and posted their pictures and their names and links to their social media and...
...from all over the country to...
By the way, he's describing why his, his son was like, you know, doing, like blocking the footage. Because like conservatives literally will just go to the extent of like, oh, you're fucking, you're gonna talk about critical race theory at this parent teachers conference? Yeah, I'm gonna fucking, I'm gonna dox you. Like, I'm gonna send your information to every fucking right wing militia out there.
Can we see their pictures? I want proof, proof!
There's a process.
Proof!
And you should be ashamed of yourself.
Excuse me?
You should be ashamed of yourself.
They're clapping! Stop your clapping for him! It's the critical race theory, that's the reason why they're clapping for him. This man accused me of vile things. He became enraged when asked for proof. The man grabbed my arm, leaving it red and swollen. Somehow police removed me from the room and did not remove the young man or his father who harassed me. Oh my God dude, this is so funny.
This is harassment. You posted they're online, you lied!
Critical race theory made these cops... Critical race theory stopped me from interrupting this meeting! Dude, this is awesome dude. This is actually fucking hilarious dude. Name literally one time a conservative doxed someone? You know I'm a fucking left, uh, like, you know I'm a leftist content creator, right? Are you fucking brain dead? And it's not just me that's been doxed a million times. There's motherfuckers in the chat right now that, that can tell you that they've been previously subbed for 10 months as bait. Oh, good one. Yeah, I wonder why they fucking, I wonder why they kicked her out dude? I guess maybe because she forgot that it's top of the hour and it's time for a 60 second ad break or something. And I just like to say that and sit back and watch the chat lose its fucking collective mind dude. Top of the hour, every hour, it's time for the first ad break of the day, boys. I do find pleasure in this. I, I really do. It's really just, it gives me so much joy. And if you'd like to no longer see the ads, if you want an ad free broadcasting experience, then all you need to do is subscribe. You can subscribe for $5 or you can subscribe for free with a Twitch Prime, that is. Okay, your Amazon Primes are just free, waiting for you to be used on a channel. Or you can use an ad block or a VPN. Here's the ad break now.
Hey, get me, they're telling me I have to go.
You have to go?
How come I don't hear the board saying enough?
Right, right.
Yeah, yeah, board, where's your voice today?
Yeah, I wonder what, like, why, dude, dude, having, imagine having this, this little self-awareness, that you post this video where you, one, try to make it seem like you're threatened by the existence of a child, okay? And then disrupt like a, like a parent teachers conference or like a school board meeting? And then get upset that they're like escorting you out gently and kindly? Also lie about being grabbed, by the way, which is pretty funny too. Like, this entire video serves the exact opposite purpose of the narrative that you were trying to cultivate. What part of this video was going to make you look like a hero? Is it the part where your husband made fun of a fucking kid who was like legitimately worried, stood in front of the camera because he doesn't want his dad being doxed and filmed? And harassed endlessly?
Tatiana did nothing wrong!
I'm not kidding you! Very great!
So look, I want to finish with the whole scripture because these people over here tell us that they are Christians. They tell us they're religious people. I just want to finish one thought. By their works shall you know them. By what you just saw, you see who...
Is it doxing and vilso in a public hearing? No, that's not the doxing. But the reason why the kid was standing in the fucking, uh, in, in, in front of the video was so that like she couldn't get a fucking clear footage of the dude so that she could upload it onto her fucking conservative networks and then have people fucking retweet it and then have people fucking go after him and, uh, and, and, you know, agitate and aggressively fucking harass these families. Now, this happens all the time. It's just like the Karen method of fighting back against it, I guess. It happens to racist people all the time when people are caught doing racist shit. The difference there of course is that like this dude is not doing anything bad or wrong. It's just the people are horny to get mad at someone being like, uh, you know, uh, kids should learn about critical race theory or whatever the fuck. Not even critical race theory, but just like kids should learn about... uh, you know, uh, kids should learn about critical race theory, or whatever the fuck. Not even critical race theory, but just like, kids should learn about America's like racial history. And he already mentioned that they did this to students. Like, they literally did this to students at another meeting and the students are being harassed. Like, the intent of why they're filming that is so that people can fucking upload, so that people can look behind, look into their background. Oh, God. New York mom Tatiana Abraham talks to Greg Kelly about her motivation to voice opposition to critical race theory at her daughter's school district.
I'm well, thank you, Greg. How are you?
Terrific. Uh, what has the reaction been like so far?
Gone a lot of support. A lot of parents coming out, all different parts of the US. A lot of support from my community, moms coming out of everywhere, children, dads. Lot of support.
You know, there was something about it, um, I, I found myself becoming almost emotional at the end, and I know a lot of other people feel the same way. Can you tell us a little bit, first about your daughter?
Abolish Long Island, I think. Good way to stop this altogether. Ship it off into the sea. Put all the conservatives there, take all the liberals out, and then ship it off into the sea. I don't even wanna watch the rest of this, this fucking clout goblin dude. Jesus Christ. I, I just, I don't wanna give her the fucking the pleasure. Okay, so...
... laughable, and people should push back on this when they say this is a Republican, uh, uh, these are, this is a Republican culture war that they're pushing in order to be successful in 2022. These people have not been contacted by any politician.
Yeah, dude, they just happen to be random people that we found that are like literally in like, uh, you know, the Republican steering committee chair, like, you know what I mean? It's just like, we, they weren't contacted by politicians. Half of those motherfuckers are like lobbyists themselves, dog. What the fuck?
They listen to their kids. No one even talked about party. This is about country and education and indoctrination.
Scary that teachers were teaching things that we didn't agree with as parents, and we didn't know about it until the pandemic. And when you see that video, it looks like a, is it the school board facility, or is it, it looks like a church, it looked like pews. It's full, packed, because parents care so much about their kids. Kids don't have a voice, and these parents say they're the union for their children.
I mean, when they say it's indoctrination, they mean like, it's not the right kind of indoctrination, the kind of indoctrination that I would like to see, okay?